The Ryenbeck Planning Board meeting for January third, second, third, or third, 2023, the first of the year will come to order. Our normal chair is not available tonight, so I'm subbing. We can get to the business on the top of the agenda. Eighteen Market Street, sign application for Marla Walker Interiors.
Good evening, everybody.
Yes, good to see you guys.
Hi.
Happy holidays to you all.
Yes.
So this is pretty straightforward. This is one of, I believe, four permitted signs in this site. Marla Walker is going into this space, or has been there, wanted to update her sign. And the only thing different here is just the color palette and the design of it. And the landlord has allowed her to move the sign from the inside part of the bowl to the outside part of the bowl, since she's there. And then whatever other tenant goes in upstairs will be going on the inside. This is where I think Mary Beth Cale at her office. That's what her years and then the other tenant after that. We've done signs a few times.
We see the pictures.
Yeah.
Just to refresh, we had multiple signs there.
Oh, sure. I thought you guys were doing the PDFs.
Are we pulling up? Do you have this available? Just to refresh our, I love it when it's on sideways. You have to click it. There you go.
Yeah, so this property includes Darrell's and also John Holman and Associates. So that's all detailed in the sign permit.
Right.
And so this is a two-square-foot, yeah, two-square-foot sign. It's one of the upstairs office spaces as opposed to the detailed block.
And the bracket and the chain are already there?
Yeah, those are all existing. They've been there for quite some time.
Any comments?
Just the, if we can go back up to the data. So we see here you've got Darrell's, A V are Darrell's, C is John with John under them, and D is Dr. Gregory Barker, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So this says 2.25 inches feet by, but I think it means feet. But when I add these all together.
Mm-hmm.
And we add the Gregory Barker, the 1.33 by 2.16.
Okay.
Actually comes to 2.7 square feet. So the total existing is actually 13.62.
Okay.
Not 13.06. You still have enough room. You still have enough room, just so for future reference, we get this correct. That means that 6.38 square feet are available.
Okay, let me just make a note on this. This is not one, I'm just standing in for another one of my project managers. And I have two other applications, but hopefully the math is correct on that one. So you said the signage available is 3 point, 13 point?
62.
Point 62?
13.62 current. When we correct the calculation for D, Dr. Gregory Barker is not 2.31, it's 2.87. And that means that the existing is 13.62.
Okay.
And with 20 available, that means you have 6.38 of that available. So the signage available, point four, is actually 6.38, not 13.06.
Okay.
But you still have room.
That's good. I don't know that, well, that will probably be handy for the next person who moves into that space.
Yes.
So I'll make sure that this is updated and a copy will be sent to Ryan to replace the current part of the PDF.
Right.
So you guys have that.
Those are the only comments I have?
The numbers guy.
Hey, everybody needs a numbers guy.
I hate that book. All right, anybody else?
Looks good.
All right, I have motion approved.
I'll make that motion, Jeff. I'll second that.
Second by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all set on that one. Should I just go back if you want? Oh, you need this for the file.
You can take it.
There, just in case. You hear for the next one?
Yep.
Okay, it's, the second item on the agenda is 44 West Market Street, Marvin Kemp and Cole, P L L C. Another sign application.
Yeah, this one's pretty straightforward. Marvin Kemp, P L L C, took on an additional partner, Justin Cole, which I'm sure you know, Mill. And now they're Marvin Kemp and Cole. So essentially, this is a text change to their existing sign. And the design, the colors, the size have all remained consistent. It's just a matter of adding another name.
The 12 before this, Jeff.
Yeah, oh, that's, that's Nat Charney.
Sure, okay.
But this is 44. That's 42.
All right.
Let me go back to 44. Apologize for having adjacent properties in the same evening. Try to space those out.
We're good.
Yeah, so that's the existing sign. And then the next two pages, the next page is what it is currently. And then the next slide is just the change. It's, they've added basically a C to the MKC icon and Cole. Had to make the P L L C a little bit larger, smaller, so that, you know, the three names could be a little larger. So it's just essentially a content change of an existing sign.
I just wondered why I don't put commas in between these lawyers' names. They don't seem to do that. But it looks like it was Marvin Kemp.
It's how it is on their, you know, DBA, I guess.
But now it looks like Marvin Kemp and Cole. But anyway.
I had it set up with commas. I was told to remove that.
Oh, is that, okay, there must be some legal reason, no doubt.
Well, I told them they didn't really need the P L L C, but they disagreed with me.
Okay.
Okay, we'll put it in there.
Very small.
Those lawyers.
Well, you know.
And he crossed with this one. Anybody have any comments? Seems pretty straightforward. And I have motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Michael.
I'll second Jeff.
Jeff, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye again. Moving along.
So this is 42 West Market. And this is a building that our client, Nat Charney, recently purchased. And it has no signage currently. And we're looking to install a similar lighted exterior bracket. And we're preparing and allowing for some of the square footage to be used as a future tenant there. That will probably sublet some of the space to another office tenant. So we're allowing a percentage of the square footage as shown in the drawings and also on the sign permit application. Availability for a portion of the hanging sign. And then also a wall, a small wall-mounted tenant sign at the door, to the left of the door.
Do we have height dimensions from the ground?
It's hanging off the second floor.
What?
It's already, it's hanging from the second floor, not the first, though.
Yeah, but there's a provision in the code that says projecting signs shall not be less than seven feet and shall terminate no more than 12 feet from the grade.
No more than 12 feet?
I would guess that, yeah. That bracket's shot there now. They could lower that bracket. Can they make it?
The bracket is not there yet. I'm saying eight and nine, 10, 11, 12. When you say terminate, are you talking about the top of the bracket or the top of the sign?
Terminate no more than 12 feet from the grade.
Not specific. It's not specific.
Well, I think that is specific. No more than.
It's a discussion of the sign itself, right? Starts with the word sign rather than bracket.
Oh, the bracket, I'm okay with it. The sign itself has to be.
So the grade of the sidewalk to the top of the gutter on the front is 108 inches. So that's nine feet.
So you've got three more to go.
We'd have to be almost on top of the roof with that current design. You might have to lose the future hanging, the future tenant for the hanging. Well, we could reformat the sign itself to be wider and less high and sort of this bracket down. What is mega brain? We didn't install that sign, but we did make it. And I think, John, I'll have to look into that. That looks like that might be 12 feet to the top of the sign. The bracket does extend. It doesn't have lighting. It's an interesting, we were just trying to center it on the windows, the bracket. But I think it could go down further.
Oh, yeah, certainly can go down further. And if you could.
Do you, I mean, I'm certain, I can send in a supplement to this with the actual heights and I can move it down to that amount.
Do you want to do a conditional approval based on confirmation by the total force of power?
I like, if everybody's okay with that.
Yeah, because we can, we can adjust that so that it goes down. We can shorten up the straps. We can rework the height of those panels to.
Well, like I said, it doesn't refer to the bracket. It's the sign itself.
It's just the top of the top side.
Top of the top side, I think, is how I would interpret that.
Me too. So you can lengthen the straps.
So it seems maybe you could probably make it and still have clearance over the roof.
Okay, yeah, let me, I'll get out there. I didn't have a ladder with me and I was using it just kind of as a general thing. I knew that it had to be seven feet above the sidewalk, which we've.
Yeah, somewhere along the way.
That's fine, 12 feet is good. 12 feet is good. And I think, all right, I'll send something tomorrow to detail that out a little bit further.
Jeff?
So one of the other things that I wanted to, so the wall sign, everything, the other thing, these light fixtures, I kind of detailed out what those were. They're 3,000 Kelvin, soft white, six-watt LEDs, shielded. These fixtures are identical to the ones that we did for the Star Institute building that were approved. Same exact bracket, same exact spacing, pretty much identical to that. So if you, if you look at, you know, the length of the bracket is a little bit different because of the formatting of the sign and the distance from the building and the star. But essentially, the lighting setup on this and the bulbs and the fixtures are identical to that previously approved one.
Yeah, I'm having trouble with the lighting. It's good to be, and six watts, pretty, it's not glaring.
Yeah, it's, it's appropriate, not blinding.
Page two?
Page two.
So I think we could approve this with a reformatting that gets it below the 12-foot level.
Yes, thank you.
Because I don't have any trouble with the sign itself, right?
Yep.
Okay. And if you want to leave off the future tenant panel and just put it on the door itself.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see. Until Nat gets another client, that will be probably not on the sign at all.
Right.
But I don't want to have to move the bracket up.
No, no.
Because of the electrical penetration will have to go through the wall, et cetera. And the lighting, honestly, is shown. We want to get approval for it. Whether the client wishes to proceed with that, he may go not illuminated. Just wanted the option to do it if, if he feels that it's necessary.
Right. Okay, we'll approve it with the lighting.
Right, yeah. And then you can opt out of that if you want to. Okay, just wanted to make that clear.
So any other comments? Motion to approve?
Make the motion, Darren.
I'll second that, Mike.
With condition?
With the condition that the final sign will be hung no more than 12, the top of the sign itself will be no more than 12 feet from grade.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, again, 42 West Market Street, Nathaniel K. Charney Esquire, attorney. This is for a site plan for modifications to the building.
What do you mean?
Evening. Okay, you were here before and explained what you wanted to do. It seemed reasonable, and we got the drawings. Why don't you just go over it quickly, just in case there's somebody in the audience who's interested?
Okay, so this is located at 42 West Market Street. It's an existing building. It's recently purchased by Mr. Charney. He's going to use it as his law office. He's currently renting an office space in the village. What we're proposing is actually it's an interior renovation to the building in order to be better suited for his needs. However, although we've taken great pains not to change the exterior, there are a couple of new features that are being installed as part of the building improvements. Number one, currently, the building is only serviced by, it's serviced by two exits. And when I did the full code review, I really have to have two code-compliant exits out of the building. The front door is fine, facing West Market Street, but the back door has a really degraded old set stairs that doesn't meet contemporary code requirements. So we have to rebuild those to code with a landing and railings. So that's being proposed in the back. And also, the building is currently, it's heated with gas boiler, but the air conditioning is window units. And Mr. Charney would like to get rid of those and install a heat pump system for cooling on the inside. And heat pumps require exterior units. So as shows on the exterior elevation there, that's the, you scroll down, thanks, Ryan. That's the back of the building. This lot is relatively small. It's only about a tenth of an acre. And the backyard is completely enclosed with fence that's about five and a half feet tall. The heat pump units are shown there against the building. The ground mount units, only about, I think they're about three feet wide, two and a half feet tall, about 12 inches thick. They're relatively small. We are mounting them on the ground. And all of the line sets going to the interior units will actually be run inside the walls. So a lot of times when buildings are retrofitted with these heat pumps, this octopus sort of goes on the outside. It looks pretty bad. So even though the back of the building really isn't visible, we decided to do that anyway, just to maintain the exterior as best as possible. And that's it.
So how do you do that, actually? Just by curiosity, how easy it is to do?
With the line sets?
Yeah.
Well, it's more difficult than just slapping them on the exterior and putting the calyon. But since we're doing interior renovations anyway, we're actually gutting the, some of the walls on the inside and improving the insulation. So once we do that, we can just run the line sets into the wall and up in the cavities. It's a balloon-framed building, so it's relatively easy once we get through.
So it's only easy to do if you're going to take off the plaster on the inside?
Yeah, it's a lot easier to just smack it on the outside, which is why you're seeing all on the outside.
Because that's what we always get when we're trying to figure out what the alternatives are and how difficult it is. And encourage people not to put this stuff up the sides.
Tell them to call Dave Stewart. He uses a great job installing this.
Dave Stewart from Going Green?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And we have, John, a document here confirming that the current use is mixed-use commercial.
Okay.
And it will continue to be mixed-use commercial, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I wanted to ask about ADA compliance. Can you get into building with wheelchair or?
No, currently, the building isn't handicap compliant. And I actually had meetings with both Ryan and with Ken to see if that was going to be mandatory, and it was not. So we're just maintaining the building as is.
Okay. I'm on the comprehensive planning committee, and we're trying to make all the commercial buildings in the Village Center ADA compliant. And I know it's hard, you know? We surveyed the ones and about half the buildings are not and half the buildings are.
Uh-huh.
So think about it, if there's a way to do it, I would encourage you to do it even if it's not required by the building inspector.
Well, actually, this is only the first phase that Mr. Charney wants to do to the building. He really needs to get out of his current rented space. He needs to get in.
Yeah.
So we're renovating the inside now so he can, you know, start to occupy the building. But I've already figured out a plan B for how we can provide handicap compliance. And also, he may in the future, if need be, create a small addition onto the back, similar to what John Martin's firm did to their.
Yeah. Very similar buildings.
Mm-hmm.
And I think he managed to do it in the back, right?
I believe he did it in the back, yeah, yeah.
So I think about that. I think I'd encourage you to, you know, we should be better as a board about making sure every time a building site planned, especially in the commercial district, comes up, we should push for that, those sorts of improvements, because it's really unfair to a lot of people. All right. Everything I see is going to be hidden by that fence around the backyard, so it seems pretty innocuous to me. But any comments?
I'm just glad they're putting it inside the wall.
Yep. Any comments?
No.
No, it looks like what you're doing is the right thing.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve. Second, Jeff.
Okay, all over there.
Aye.
All right, moving right along.
Thank you, folks.
Welcome to the village.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Charney?
Thank you.
Thank you. Right, next item on the agenda is 15 Kramer Road, Anita Killian, an architect, Jess Walker. Hello?
Hi. Hi. So this is a single-family home currently under construction on Kramer Road over behind the hospital in the village. And we already have a special permit for an accessory apartment, a gas cabin. And we would like to reconfigure the parking area, it's a very small parking area in front, to bring all three cars in front of the face of the building, the front facade. That was our original design, and we ended up putting, when we, when we got the permit for the accessory building, the accessory unit in the back, we put the, one of those spaces behind the front facade, interpreting the town code and village code doesn't require that. So we'd like to bring all the spaces in the front of the building and put those privacy events in line with the facade.
I was trying to recreate this. I was there that night when we approved it, obviously, and I think several members were. But I don't remember discussion about the parking, and I'm not sure what was said, and then I'm trying to be consistent. But there is a provision in the code that requires the parking to be behind the front plane of the building for accessory units.
In the village.
In the village, yeah. It says, this is accession 120-28, accessory dwelling units and two family dwellings and general performance standards. It says, except in a driveway which may not exceed 18 feet in width, it must be delineated. Parking is not allowed in the front yard or any portion thereof, forward to the front plane of the principal structure, nor shall this area be utilized, provided any parking space required in this chapter. I know that's not consistent with Kramer Road. You know, almost all the parking is front yard parking or garage parking. And I assumed we sort of allowed existing additions. I'm not sure how or why we didn't require parking behind the front plane of the building. You want to see this section of the code? I don't know. See if I'm.
So this is Village.
Yep. 2028.
I think we'd have to revisit that meeting, John, like, I thought that that's what we did. And I thought that's why this is the current plan.
That was approved.
This is, yes, this is the amendment they're asking for.
Correct.
And so here's the garage, and I thought that's why this driveway was jogged out to allow enough width to put a parking space behind the front plane of the building.
Says except in the driveway. So we are proposing to park in the driveway. That's, that's the exception.
Maybe I'll read this one.
I think that may intend my original issue as well.
Yeah, it does say, except in a driveway, which is.
So we have an 18-foot-wide driveway, two cars in front and one inside in the garage. Luckily enough, we have the depth of our driveway to park two cars on a road.
What's that? Sorry, thank you very much. That, we dug out the minutes from the meeting that night, and it didn't.
I don't believe we talked about it in the meeting that night. That car went behind the front facade of the building, talks with the building department. And I believe we were discussing.
I think because it wasn't talked about, because the board complimented you guys on pulling that space for the accessory unit alongside the garage. Because I think, yes, it states, except in a driveway. I think what this board has strived is to not have cluster parking. Even though you guys have a parking space in that garage, you're sort of single filing the cars in the driveway, and you almost reach the street. So I think this board has been trying to achieve where if it's not so clustered and single-file with vehicles, you know, I think that's what they're trying to accomplish. And by your diagram, I don't know, when you have that second car there, can that car maneuver around car number three?
Yes, it's just like.
To get out?
It's just like parking on the street.
That's going to have to be, you know, the board's decision.
I need to live there alone, this accessory dwelling, for other family member, maybe to stay with her aging family member.
99 years old, not driving.
I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of vehicular activity in this driveway. And privacy is fairly important because we have that open hurdle behind.
Yeah, the other thing that I was worried about is the big tree next to the driveway. If you widen that driveway to 12, 18.
To think that tree would be fine, with just a few more feet. You can see it, we marked off the 18-foot line on the tree. And it's adding about two and a half feet of pavement.
Here's some, here's what it looks like. Where's the mark?
Yeah, I paced that driveway off as 12, 13 feet, that existing driveway.
Well, we marked, we marked it there. It's marked on site.
You mean that little stake?
So you're.
Yeah, that, oh, wait, in the last.
Yes, for this stake.
You can see that stake.
And that stake, exactly.
It's still getting pretty close to the trunk of the tree. I would prefer you left it throw to the driveway.
We could leave the throat and then you drive around.
And then widen once you get beyond the tree.
That would still be parking requirements, yeah.
Like I said, this is Kramer Road where every, every house out there, virtually.
Yes.
I mean, it's every house, but everyone I saw has front yards parked.
Yes.
And a driveway where people fill it up with junk and they park in front of the driveway.
Many, yeah.
We would also very much like less, more garden and less paved area.
Yeah, although it is a pretty good-sized lot.
Yeah. Well, we'd spread out the house because we have this big green courtyard in the middle. Because it's not your typical lot.
Yes.
Layup.
Pretty sure you're not going to lose a side mirror on that tree when you're.
Yeah. Yeah, we're sure. We, we, we was very much intent to keep that tree private.
I prefer the first one myself.
Yeah, if you. Here's my other concern. If you park cars, I mean, if you cram them in here, and you park cars, you're not going to get a car out of or into this garage.
About 18 feet, you can, you can get by those big cars.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, the cars are six feet wide. They're.
Cars six, seven feet wide at most.
With, with rearview mirrors?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they can get by. It's just, if, if that tree, I don't know where it is on this, is it near the parcel line?
Yes, it's, it's, it's.
So you're going to have a little narrower throat.
And then it.
And then it comes out, and are you going to have room for two spaces anyway?
Yeah, and the three-foot at the top is not required.
Yeah, I don't know.
So just again, why would you need, if you're living there alone, why would you need three?
We don't require.
You don't need three. Code requires three.
Not my, not my.
Code requires three.
Yeah, we, we proved that you can park.
Because of the, I see, because we have the ADU that was approved.
Yes.
But there's also street parking abundant in that street, so.
Yeah, but you can't park in there in the winter, so.
Yeah.
But you have a big, a long enough driveway that you could, and you've got a garage.
Yes.[1797.83]
and three is required, but a lot of people have less than three cars.
Right.
So...
So, so we're not trying to make it three cars, because I want to have three cars, it's just according to the requirements.
Yes.
And we have fairly extensive landscaping going in, we have a great landscaper, and we're going to landscape the site. Just having more pavement and no fence is against the concept. Right.
That tree's not going anywhere. Like, we couldn't, even if we, even if you wanted to move the tree.
In the 19, 2012 Google Maps, it has two trees flanking the driveway.
Oh, really?
Yeah. When I went after, there was only one left, but there were two smaller trees that came out on both sides, it was nice.
So then the, although it's not on the site plan, the, the extensive landscaping, will that help add a little more privacy or shield?
Yes.
Cars here from...
Yeah, that was in our original, landscaping was in our original simul.
Okay. Was that right?
What do you guys think?
What is...
I like both plans, and because the whole neighborhood is pretty much, you know, looking like this already, it's not gonna stand out, and, and, you know, if you want to make privacy, I think that's a good fence for there. So I would be fine with this change.
I definitely prefer the parking arrangement in the first plan, but I don't, you know, I'm having a hard time finding a reason to say that we can't do the second plan. In either scenario, I think it's close to the tree, I think that the pavement is probably gonna cause a problem to the tree regardless, just because the roots are gonna be under it. But I'm not seeing a way through to solve and make this much better, honestly. So, I think I'm neutral.
I think you could go to 12.
Yes, we'll pinch the driveway and then open it up.
And then curve around the tree from there.
Yeah, after there is as much as possible.
And you could still get two cars to the right and one in the garage, right?
Yes.
I know, it looks like, isn't the tree closer to the, where we're using it for parking spot number three though, in this new scenario? That's where I'm struggling, I'm not convinced that we can get around it without 18 feet and have parking.
But I guess that that's about right on the property line, given where the telephone pole is.
Right, which is where parking space number three in the new scenario wants to be.
We'll push this, we'll push the two cars up to three feet, and there'll still be room to walk in front of them, and, and maybe we'll keep the driveway the same width it is now, right where the tree is.
Yeah. The, the, when you say the driveway would be the same width that is now, in this photo, is that 18 feet?
No.
No, where, where the tree is, we'll pinch it, and then open it up after the tree.
Is it where the gravel is, Jeff, does that make it the 18?
Yeah, maybe a little bit.
This would be 18, so this is like 13 or so. So you would bring it out, and then curve out behind the tree to create the two spaces over here, and the drive to the driveway. So this would only, it would remain as is, but it would curve out to make that theoretical third spot.
We'll also make sure that we're not running heavy equipment over the roots, because that's really what hurts the trees.
Yeah.
Is there a scenario where the fence just gets shorter, and you keep the parking scenario in the first plan, but add the fence in, so you just shorten your courtyard a little bit?
She really wants to be able to, to screen that whole, that whole area and create a side yard there that's green.
And I imagine you have south-facing windows, looking at a car, in a garden.
And it will only be a car there most of the time, so you're really just looking at blacktop.
Yeah, well, you could do gravel or brick or some other pavement in that area that wouldn't look as bad as blacktop, but it still would be paved rather than green right near the house.
And you wouldn't have the fence, I think the fence is really the biggest, the biggest issue.
Yeah, I mean, because on John's line of thinking there, you know, your blue stone path, all it would need to do is widen out a bit and change in material, you can essentially get your walkway and your parking spot, which you don't really need.
And that is the garage, yeah.
Houses are pretty tight together.
It's not the south side of the house.
We really want to try to get as much privacy as we can, because there's gonna be a lot of outdoor use here.
Yeah.
So the, that means the fence will come right up to the corner. I mean, basically, the front facade of the house will be a continuous plane across the front of the house and the fence.
The fence will be natural wood, yeah.
And we consider that behind the front plane.
Six feet behind, is it parallel?
Or does it have to be set back any particular amount of inches?
From the front plane back, it can be six feet.
Right, but I'm talking about fences perfectly in line with the front of the house, such as this, count as six foot, they can be six foot, because it's behind the front.
Anything in front of the front plane, they can have it down to four.
Distance, it has to be staggered at all?
Maybe we set back a little bit, just for our...
Yeah, just for, more than four or six inches, yeah. It's, it's shown as parallel, so that, that would do a lot for me if it was, if it was set back.
Set back six inches.
I agree, it'd provide at least some relief instead of a, because it's a very long house in the front, presents itself.
Well, we could set it back a little more, I mean, we could set it back a foot or, or 18 inches, but I think six is...
I think just to break that long row of structure.
And a big gate there too, obviously, right?
Yes.
So that'll break it too.
Yes.
Yeah.
So are you okay with the revised?
Yeah, I agree with Darren, I wish we could stay with the original plan, but, and also, as Michael points out, this, it happens a lot on this street. So with the, with the extra addition of pushing that fence back to provide some relief from the front plane of the house, I'm okay.
All right. So we get a motion to approve with the condition that the driveway stay existing width until it gets behind the tree.
Sure.
And that the front plane of the southerly fence, I think that's south, I'm not sure, the fence to the right side of the building is pushed back at least six inches.
Sure.
And then for that part of the driveway that will widen out, is there any, we can use any kind of driveway material, it doesn't have to be...
No, it's, it's in the code.
What, okay, so, like, can it be brick or?
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
There are, so do you know what those options are?
Yeah.
Is it maybe nicer than to just have the blacktop?
Well, you might want to replace all of it, we'll look at, we'll look at what's allowable.
Yeah.
Good?
All good.
So can I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Michael?
I'll second.
Add on to that the fence and the gate.
That the fence...
The fence and the gate were not part of the original...
Yeah, well, it's part, it's shown on the proposed plan here, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's a fence closing the side yard there. All right.
How far does that fence go then? Does the fence go to the...
Property line.
To the property line?
But not on the property, parallel line.
It can go up too, Jess, but it can't be directly on the property line.
So we'll look back a couple of...
And there's no desire to turn the fence and have it private here in their corner? Is that...
To do fences on the side yards? Her family members surround, surround the house.
Yeah, that's my brother's house next door, so, you know, we're not trying to, you know, good fences make good neighbors. Do good fences make good family relations, I don't know. But, you know, so we're not trying to block off from that house, it's more from the front.
Okay.
Okay, so it's just a single line fence running along here?
Yes.
And this is completely open from here all the way back to the end, so you provided a access path for your brother to come over and enjoy the pergola.
Exactly. And my mother, who's living there.
So I think we have a motion and a second, do we have a vote? Hall and Vayner?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
A big improvement on that house, I think.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we think accessory apartments are a good thing for the village.
So Jess, get me the new one? Because we need to have the chair when he's better to stamp the sign.
Anybody wants one of these, I didn't notice, check it out.
And then we'll have to talk about how we have to update the building permit, not for the driveway, but for the other.
Check.
Yep, the, the other stuff.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll go over to set up the camera.
All right. Wow, we're moving right along here. Do we have anything to discuss? The one thing I noticed, that I thought I'd bring up, we, we don't have the, you know, when John Fett was here, bless his soul, we used to have sort of a frontline, every night after the meeting, we would talk about enforcement issues, and we don't have that, so we have to sort of pass it along from you, Ryan, but there's, there's two things that bother me, and have been for a while, and I, I think I should bring them up. We were talking in the comprehensive plan meetings about providing tree, trees along the entryways, especially in the northern gateway district, providing continuous tree trees, because a lot of those parcels are not exactly beautiful from the point of view of front yard parking and other things.
Okay.
And my memory was when we approved this CO, the office workplace there, we were supposed to get street trees across the front, and they never put them in. And then when we approved the sign and the plaza changes at Bill Clark's Plaza there, just on the side of the, of the CO, they had street trees across the front of that, and only two of them are left, they seem to have died or been cut down. So that there's a whole stretch there from that Bill Clark's, the laundromat, up to that other thing where they never followed through with their site plan, the old, tax shop, whatever that's named now, they never did their site plan improvements either.
Well, when we approved that, we set a time limit.
12 months, that was more than 12 months ago.
I thought it was the spring of this year coming up.
Yeah. So at the rate, I was hoping that you might look at the records for CO and, and the plaza, Bill Clark's Plaza, and see if indeed my memory is right, and they didn't put the street trees in that they should have. I remember Bill Clark complained about the trees, because they said they blocked his sign, and I think we compromised that one tree, but now it seems like we've compromised two or three trees. So in other words, you know, on the fairground side, there's, there's pretty good street trees, but on the developed side, where you really need them most, there's big gaps, and I was hoping to be able to close them up. If indeed we had site plans that were never fully carried out.
And to add one more to that, John.
Okay.
When we, when we were a little bit blindsided with that house on South Street that put five or six splits outside the house, a couple of them in front of the house.
Yes.
We had a couple of meetings on that, and the final decision, which we were very careful about, stated that they must put evergreen, minimum four-foot-high bushes to shield those units, and that I'm sure has been more than a year.
Yeah, we might, I was...
Every time I go by, it's just a couple of sticks in front of the house.
I was gonna wait until the spring to see, you know, if they were waiting to plant something, but, yeah, that's, that's bothered me as well.
Ryan has heard me with Colm Nagy, found eight dead trees on three of the four lines, we put in his last tenant, which is fine, he cut five of the dead ones along my line and didn't replace them yet. There's nothing, the other three, one of them that the village paid for is still dead, so it's like, I spoke to Lydia yesterday, and I was just like, I know it's winter time, but, you know, come spring, I think we're gonna need the big envelope of going back and checking things and...
Yeah.
When the tree commissioner hires these trees, they're, they're really inexpensive, they're about $80 apiece.
Is that right?
For the street trees that they use, and because what they're doing is they're buying them bare root, and they're dipped in a gel, so you have to plant them immediately, they come out basically in just essentially bundles, as opposed to buying a bald tree, which takes a machine and all kinds of other work, so it might even be an option where, you know, we send sort of a good neighbor letter to property owners and say, hey, if you'd like to purchase some street trees or have the tree commission do this to fulfill your requirements or otherwise, you know, replacing it order, it doesn't hurt us to add more trees to the order, you just have to pay for it. It might just be, you know, extending away for them to put their four trees in for $320 rather than $1,000 apiece. I mean, the London Plains at our office were seven or 800 bucks apiece. You know, they're bigger than a street tree that the village would plant, but, you know, it's a good alternative to save quite a bit of money, to get in compliance quick, if we were to somehow offer them a, you know, you're, you're in violation, but it's a simple...
Some of the trees the tree committee puts in are pretty spindly and...
They're pretty spindly, but they do grow fairly quickly. I mean, it's, you know, it's something, if someone's really pushing back or, you know, a tree they're needing.
Yeah, if they say they're too much money or whatever, you give them as an option.
Right, just say, hey, well, if you, you know, paid by the state, you can have these trees and pick them up at town hall when they come in.
Yeah.
But that's an option. The other thing just to mention with the mini splits is, they do require two feet of clearance in front of them, so when we look at site plans and people talk about enclosures and evergreens and things like that, you know, it's sort of fiction if someone says they're gonna jam a row of shrubs right in front of these things and not leave that two feet. So something, you know, South Street's probably okay because of the way they face, but, you know, when you get into these sort of tight side lars, you know, the next argument people are gonna bring to us is, well, it did froze our unit, because...
Yeah, well, they put those spindly little sticks in front, and they're right up against the ends.
Right up, yeah, which is, you know, bad for them to do, but I'm just thinking from a planning perspective, if someone proposes them and says, no, don't worry, I'm gonna put shrubs in front of them, you know, the answer is, well, you have to have two feet plus the space for the shrub to grow, to make that effective, just as a, you know, another data point on mini splits.
Yeah. Anything else?
I was gonna bring up just a procedural thing, and that is, maybe we could just, because I've been sort of asked by people who are confused in the audience after the fact, maybe we just post our mask policy, Ryan, on, on the agenda somehow?
Okay.
I think when people come in and see us wearing masks, there's this sort of like freak out that they're somehow in compliance or not in compliance if they do or don't have their masks.
What is our mask policy?
And maybe we want to talk about what it is.
Up to the board.
Okay, it's not required by any village tall procedures or anything?
I wasn't gonna wear one tonight, because David wasn't here then, when you said your wife is sick, oh, okay.
Now we have the new northeastern variant.
Right.
Yes, it's getting crazy out there, everybody I know is sick. And...
Oh, I have a question.
Okay.
On the board, for your placards, do you want your names?
Placards?
Yes, we've been, that's another thing that has been commented on, is that people don't know, if they don't know you, they don't know who you are.
It's a good point.
So, we didn't have placards, and then COVID hit, and we didn't use them again, and people have left, and, you know, my office has been changed three times, so I know where they all are, but, you know, I don't know how sturdy or how reliable they are, or if they're falling apart. And I know some say the name and then planning board member underneath the name, and then others are just the name, like I think John, yours just says John Clark, David has village planning board member, planning board member underneath it, Mike, you just had, it just says Michael Gee, and then that's it, because when you came on, Jeff, we were still in COVID, we were on Zoom, and Darren, you just joined us in August, so, do you guys just want your name, or do you want planning board underneath your name? How do you want your plaque and your cards to...
Name's fine with me.
Yeah, I think the name is fine.
I think they'll know we're...
If you have one that says planning board member, and you want to use it, that's fine with me too.
I mean, we can find out and take the extra leap on how the mayor does it with the mayor, where he has the Velcro with the, you know, trustee meeting and things like that, and we can do that on the front of the table if you'd like.
Yeah, as long as it's big enough to be read, and it would be helpful, especially if we continue to record the meetings. Yeah, as long as it's big enough to be read, and it would be helpful, especially if we continue to record the meetings, it'd be helpful if it can be read in the videos.
Can the recording read what's here? Because when you show the agenda, it has the meeting date on top.
It won't be able to read that, but what, what I have done with some of them is edited a close up, which is why I put this here tonight. So that when I edit this video for Ryan, I'll be able to do close ups on this.
All right, well, that says village planning board meeting and the date, so I don't know if we need a Velcro thing, but I think the names would be helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And as a frequent applicant, being able to read it, bigger font and less text on it is helpful, because if, you know, you're trying to respond to somebody's question and keep your train of thought, it's nice to just glance over and be able to refer to someone by name, so, you know, if I was in the audience, I'd prefer less text, bigger letters, personally.
We can work on that.
I think this is a great improvement, thank you, Jeff, are you committed to doing this forever?
Well, you know, we, we've all spoken with Lydia, I guess, in the last few weeks, and some of the things, it's, I think we mentioned some of the same things, you know, about enforcement and stuff like that. The town bought two units that are called owl units on the table over there that are designed for hybrid meetings through either Zoom or meeting, et cetera. I asked Lydia, can we use them for the board meetings, and then I won't have to bring my camera anymore. But I guess Ryan told me that gotta be trained on it first. So if, if Ryan gets trained on it, or if there's somebody here that can do that, then because there's two of them, we could have one of them pointing to whoever's speaking and another one, I hope, close up on the display here, so that.
So they're owl, because they follow.
That, that'll take some experimentation, you know, it'll take a little while to experiment with it, but.
For the very short window of conversation when I had with PCA, and just for the record, PCA stands for Professional Computer Associates, which is the contracted tech company that the, the village has on the contract. When the technician was here delivering the system and checking the system, the, the owl, as Darren pointed out, the camera inside will move to whoever's talking. And then the other camera, I'm guessing, focuses either on the screen or solely on the board. So if the screen is behind the board, that secondary unit camera is gonna pick up the screen as well. And then the other unit picks up the crowd or the speaker, whoever is speaking. The one thing that he made very clear was, and people can't see it at home, but here there are markings on the floor, the unit has to be within a certain distance from itself, and it can't be no more than that distance, or else the system will not work. So I think there's gonna have to be some definitely learning process, learning curve with this whole thing, because not, not only will I have the ability to do hybrid meetings, we gotta know if it will, it will record, and then that recording, we have access to it. I don't know if anyone has checked, but on our YouTube page, we are fairly caught up, except for one meeting in September, which Jeff has graciously put in sync, and, you know, we're gonna get that uploaded with this week, but we're we're caught up with video recordings for 2022 on our YouTube page. For everyone who wants to check that out, so.
Is there somewhere on the website or whatever that refers YouTube?
I believe it's mentioned that the building planning zoning department has its own YouTube page, but if you go into YouTube and you search Village Rhineback Planning Board, ours, our videos will come up and you just have to pick, 'cause I make sure that each one is categorized and differentiated by month. And both the title and the description of, of the video.
Okay, never tried.
Yeah, are they sorted by date?
Yes.
Okay.
So our November meetings would be split from November first, and the national would be November fifteen, and then December sixth.
So are we meeting in two weeks?
I believe so.
Seems like it's slowing down a little bit here.
It's slowing down a little bit. We will have a sign application for Cafe Comlette. They will be moving into what was Halcyon and Coen's Bakery and Calico.
Puerto Rico food.
If no one knows, they originate from Wapentress Falls, and they are expanding up here.
Something you know about for next meeting?
Well, hopefully, Victoria will be back to change for the property 6376 Mill Street. Changing it from a lodging facility to apartments with retail or commercial on the first floor street side.
So that will be?
That shouldn't affect parking, right? Because it's one per unit on both hotels and.
It actually goes down.
Yeah, probably would be fewer apartments, yeah, than hotel rooms, because they have to be a little bigger.
And he's staying with the first, well, ground floor apartment will be ADA compatible.
Good.
That meeting will be January seventeenth?
Well, that's good, I think we need more residents in the village center. It probably won't be affordable, but from what I understand, he doesn't he's, he can be flexible on rent more so than other landlords. I guess we don't need the money. Right, I should keep my editorial comments off the agenda. Do we want to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.